Anime's here, just through a conference call.
Okay.
So I know that others are having problems too, but I think, you know, Anime was gonna kick it off unless you guys wanna do something else.
Hi guys, should we just go forward? I'm wasting a lot of people's time and I feel really badly.
It's not you, Anime. It just seems to be. I've heard that internet is a little funky around town anyway. So can you hear us?
Anyway, you're being kind, so I wanna call to order this April 23rd meeting. In order to get this going, I'd like to take a roll. Do we need to take a roll call? We're not going into executive session.
I think we need to take a, well, if we're just gonna open, we don't need to take a roll.
Meeting, yeah, just open the meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry?
No, call the meeting to order.
Alright, so maybe Jeff, will you do the questions and answers since I can't hear it since right now we just have public input? I think we're gonna take public input at a couple of bullets, just to fully engage with the public and some questions that they may have, but right now citizens at this time, they address the committee on items of school business. Not on the agenda, the committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented. Do we have any public input at this time?
Chris Potts raised her hand.
Do you wanna read that since I can't hear anything?
I don't have it yet, but let's wait and see if she puts it on the question and answer.
Great.
Alright, you can let her speak too, if that's easier.
Is that me? I should not be the host.
I think Owen, Owen can do it.
Yep, do you want me to allow the question to be asked verbally or through the Q and A?
She would like to suggest that the vice chair handle Q and As since it is a school committee meeting.
Yes.
I'm perfectly happy to do that, so.
Anime, I sent you the direct dial directions if you'd like to dial directly in.
Alright, so.
We're gonna keep the meeting going, I'll use another phone and see if that works for you, so thank you. So maybe Jeff can read the Q and A?
Alright, so Chris Potts would like to suggest that vice chair handles questions and answers since it's a school committee meeting. That is perfectly fine. Chris, feel free to submit your question. That wasn't.
Yeah, that was.
Thank you very much. Okay, so. Anybody else who would like to raise their hand for a question and answer? Okay, thank you very much. Public comment is closed at this time for matters that are not on the agenda and Anime, are you still there?
Yeah, yeah. Do we wanna go on to the approval of the executive session meeting minutes, please?
Sure, I'll do it. It's Tim. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:17, 3:26, 4:03, and 4:09.
Second?
Mayor Chair, I would just add that you may wanna have us retain those minutes. You can approve them, but then retain them for a future time and we will release them.
Retain for release?
Retain, then it'll be a future release.
Okay.
Yes, we can, yes, we can do that. So Tim, do you want to redo your motion?
Sure, make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:17, 3:26, 4:03, and 4:09, but retain releasing until a future date based on some of the topics in there.
Great. Do we have a second?
Megan Glenn, second.
Great. I'll take a roll call though. Jessica Riley?
Aye.
Leo Graham?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Good night.
Aye.
And Anime O'Shea Brook, yes, motion passes, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business, school closure and reopening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this agenda item was originally gonna be put on as we were kinda planning for a school closure, excuse me, reopening this school year, but of course on Tuesday we got the news that school was gonna be closed down for the remainder of the school year. So, you know, some of the things that we've been talking about, superintendents at the state level is the reentry piece and how we're gonna reentry and have students and staff come back in either August or September depending on when your first day is. I just wanted to share some of the items that the commissioner asked us to start thinking about in terms of reentry and I think that we're gonna be getting some further guidance on this from the state in the coming weeks in terms of how we're gonna do the reentry, but just to give you a sense of what we're being asked to think about. One is to have random temperature screenings as kids enter the building, to have random temperature screenings to make sure that there aren't kids that have fevers that are coming in. One that is really challenging to us, I think, is staggered schedules. So taking a look at maybe half the school or certain grade levels in the building and the other half of the grade levels or students doing remote learning at the same time. So I think that's again, something that they're asking us to think about, not something that they're gonna mandate right now, but just to be prepared for in case the pandemic continues. Looking at student desks being six feet apart, which I think would be extremely challenging for a school. I think the whole idea of social distancing in a school is extremely difficult. Another suggestion they had is running partial days so that there's no lunch and no cafeteria use in the school. So I think, you know, roll enclosures is one other one they talked about where if you were in a situation where you may have an outbreak at a certain school, that you shut down that school only, look at remote learning for that school and keep the rest of the district open. So those are just some of the concepts that the state is asking us to start to think about in terms of reentry. There's gonna be a whole other, obviously, plan that go in place when we start to do this. I think it's it's difficult when we have just a week off to come back to school, never mind when we've missed so much in a quarter, 25% of the year, and then having a reentry after that, even after the summer. So we're definitely gonna be planning around that and doing it as we have with everything in this pandemic in a thoughtful way that takes the kids' best interests in mind and look at their social emotional health, which is I think what we've done through this whole process. And, but, you know, much more to come around that, much more to come. So certainly, when we talked about this, it was going to be reentry this year, but as we know, that's not happening.
So roll enclosures would obviously be a very difficult thing for us to do, obviously with the fact that we don't have neighborhood schools and that we have kids from the same family in multiple schools. I think that that's a difficult way, thing to think about in terms of how it would work in our district.
Right.
At this point, I haven't really heard an enormous amount about how we're going to get back to school, but literally how we're going to manage this year itself and the academic challenges around that, and then the academic challenges of managing a new school year. Do we? I know that the state is offering guidance, I think, tomorrow around that, but do you have any thoughts or talk, anything that you can kinda speak to on that?
Sure, I mean, I think, you know, we've had some, a lot of conversation, you know, we had some conversation this morning about his leadership team because we're looking at, number one, we're doing a thought exchange survey with the staff right now to get their sense of, you know, where they are. Essentially, it's the same question that parents will get tomorrow. It's an open-ended question. Okay, we're four or five weeks into this. How's it going? What's working well? What can we improve on? So we're getting some real good feedback from staff on that. We hope to get good feedback from parents. When we launch that tomorrow, they'll probably go into Monday afternoon and then we'll get the guidance and we'll look at all that and put that together and we're ready to pivot and do some different things if we need to. That's not an issue for us. I think that we're, you know, one of the few schools, districts that has a memorandum agreement with their teachers that explicitly says two contacts per day. What I'm seeing out there is a lot of MOAs that say, you know, three contacts a week, an average of, you know, four a week, but not two a day. So I think it's, you know, the time is there and the commitment is there for our teachers. I mean, they've been really working hard and doing a great job with this, but we may need to to look at what we're doing for direct instruction, how that looks, and maybe shift a little bit from our Zoom meetings that focus on check-ins to more instruction and/or feedback. So those are all the things that we're talking about and we're waiting to get information from both the teachers, parents, and the state and then look at how we'd make a pivot at that stage. So definitely, you know, always looking to improve. Got a couple of good emails from parents the last couple of days with suggestions. I think it's interesting and talking with my colleagues, it runs the gamut in every town around here. It's, you're doing too much, you're not doing enough, and so it's all over the place. And I think it really depends on individual circumstances in the homes and how that works. I mean, we have situations here where we have multiple kids in a family all sharing the same device. So if you were looking at a synchronous model of everyone having to be on Zoom at a certain time, that creates problems for families. So we really looked at asynchronous mode where kids can refer back to whatever the lesson is and learn from it. It's almost, we talked about it today, it's that flipped classroom model, but a remote learning model of that where if you're using Screencastify or Flipgrid where kids can look at that multiple times and then use Zoom to check back in and get feedback and work with kids that way. So, again, it's not, I've been very clear from the beginning, we're not trying to recreate the school day. That's not what we're doing. If folks want, you know, five hours of Zoom lessons every day, that's just not gonna happen. It cannot happen in the mode that we're in right now. It just, and it's not.
I don't think that's scalable, Jeff. I mean.
Totally not.
Five hours of Zoom is nauseating, so.
I love you guys, but, you know.
And I think the thing that we've been really cognizant of the fact is that, and again, I've tried to be clear about this in all my communications, is that we have, we have teachers that have families as well. So I have two kids in school. My wife's a teacher, so we're trying to balance all that and so is everyone else trying to do that. So I think it's it's really uncharted territories, but we are open to feedback. That's why we're doing the thought exchange, that's why we're getting the information and we're ready, we're ready to pivot to something a little different if we need to. If that's what the guidance says and that's what the feedback is from teachers and parents, then we're willing to do that. But I think up until this point, we've got a lot, a lot of positive feedback on what we're doing and how we've approached this. I got, I have colleagues that went, you know, right to synchronous teaching right from the beginning and now they're trying to back off to asynchronous. I mean, they're trying to get back off that because it's not working. You know, the state of New Hampshire was law in the beginning of this. Well, they went all to online learning. Guess what? It's not working well. So I think we tried to, we tried to have a very measured approach to this and look at what is, what is working, what can work for both kids, what can work for teachers, and now the piece that we're working with now is is how can we introduce more new content and more direct instruction? That's what the next phase will do. Phase four will be all of that. Looking at that and the state will guide us with that. So I'm pleased and really proud of the work that our teachers and administrators have done up to this point, and I know they'll rise to the challenge in phase four. I have no, no issues or dealt with that at all.
Jeff, I wanna.
When and how can the parents expect to be enlightened, so to speak, and the results of the data collection and the guidance from the state and so forth? Do you have like a timeline for, you know, the parents that are writing in and making their suggestions? I'm sure they want more information. Is there a date we can to say by this day, you know, you'll know per the principals or per the superintendent or the school committee?
Yeah, I mean.
They'll make it clear?
Sure, so what we, you know, we expect to get that guidance from the state sometime tomorrow afternoon. That was what we were told. If that is Monday, then that certainly pushes it beyond that. We're getting the good feedback from the teachers, we'll get it from the parents. We'll sit down and meet and try to strategize. I think, you know, based on the essential learnings the state's gonna release, so the state is gonna release essential learnings in this guidance that basically every kid needs to have an understanding of this before going on to the next grade, and that's the way it's been presented to us. So we'll take some time with that and look at it and we'll, again, we've been pretty, we haven't been knee-jerking this process at all and I think everyone can agree with that. We've been really thoughtful about this entire process. I mean, my goal would be midweek next week to have something as far as what the phase four is gonna look like and how we're gonna be rolling that out to everyone. But, you know, we have six weeks left of instructions. We wanna make sure that we, we do the best we can with that and so that it makes sense for all kids. And it is, you know, the equity here too, we're very cognizant of.
I think, Jeff, one of the important things to keep in mind on this, you know, for everybody who's listening as well, you know, virtual, even virtual school programs, the houses have to identify a learning coach that participates in that process for that full-time online learning and that's not what we're prepared for for anybody at home because of just what you identified. You know, we all are trying to do our jobs, you know, to working parents at our home and trying to educate students at the same time. And that, that guide on the side, that virtual learning coach is very hard to tell parents they have to be right away. So and I, and I think that's where the biggest challenge is gonna be, and as you said, we just can't do six hours, five hours of Zoom calls because it's just not healthy for kids. So I like the idea of the essential, you know, being able to focus on those essential items and I think that kinda guidance would be extremely helpful for our parents and as a parent, it would be extremely helpful to know what those essential items are as well. And, and so, and what I'm hearing back from lots of parents, just like my colleagues here, I'm sure I've been getting emails and phone calls, you know, is just that essential, keep that focus on the social emotional well-being because it is having a huge wear and tear on, on students across, you know, our entire town. And I'm watching it firsthand and as everybody else is in this, you know, on this call and listening. And so if we're gonna do Zoom calls, I highly recommend they be really focused on making connections and continuing those relationships and connections, and then we also keep that in mind as many of our students are transitioning to new schools next year, which are hard enough as it is. And so, I just wanted to take that opportunity to get a lot of the feedback I'm hearing.
So, I mean, I would say that no one's happy about this, right? None of us wanted this. You know, the kids, the kids don't want it, the teachers don't want it, the parents don't want it, none of us want this. So we're trying to do it in a way that, that makes the most sense for everyone and, you know, I think, again, I wouldn't change a thing we've done so far because our teachers have been fantastic and they've really risen through the occasion and done a wonderful job. So I totally agree. But I think we're ready for phase four and phase four will be looking at that feedback from everyone and guidance and move forward.
Jeff, I have one question. I've had one community member say that she believes that we should be voting on new curriculum to be able to change essentially what I've perceived as the pacing of the same curriculum that we continue. And so that is correct, right? We are not changing curriculum. There is no part in which we are making curriculum any different, that this is really, we're continuing with the same curriculum. It's simply about the pacing and how, so we're not adopting anything new.
No, 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 there's nothing new. No, absolutely not, no.
Absolutely not.
But I think that the pacing.
That wasn't out there, that we were somehow not really thinking very carefully about our kids. That this is really about a pacing issue and about how we get kids in the same place at the same time to move on to the right place, to the right.
You know, one of the conversations that we've had, and I know our teachers will do this, is that as you know, every year we have research and development money that we have, we have teachers work over the summer and I think that's gonna look really different this year because we're gonna look at trying to identify and assess where kids are coming in and we need to meet them where they are next year. So where we start in August and September isn't where we're always gonna start in August and September. Everyone knows that. I mean, that's, there's no way that we can sit here and say that everything that we're doing right now is exactly what happens if their kids came to school for six hours a day. It's not. So we recognize that, we know that. We're gonna meet them where they are in August and September whenever we get back to school and adjust the curriculum as, you know, as we need to. I know Christine's working really, really hard with the department heads and teachers and everyone else to make sure that that, that happens and we, as a leadership team, had that conversation this morning, that that's what we have to do. There's no, you know, there's no way around that and we recognize that.
Jeff, is there gonna be some sort of assessment around that process? Are we gonna leverage the existing benchmark systems we have already to help evaluate that upon return in the fall?
Yeah, I'm sure we do the benchmarks anyway, so I'm sure that's how we're gonna be getting into that. I mean, some of the issues that are happening now at the state level is, is whether or not they're gonna look at not having MCAS next year because of this. So there's all those conversations going on right now, but again, we're working through that right now and but we will, we will meet them where they are, no doubt about it.
I think Anime, she's just coming through on this, but Anime wanted to weigh in on something.
Yeah, sorry. You know what I wonder about is, like Jeff, because this is difficult for a lot of families, you know, trying to manage the remote learning, their jobs, you know, their households, et cetera. I'm wondering, is there, and I'm sure there is, I just wanna hear what it is. Is there some sort of safety net that we're making sure that every single child, so to speak, is accounted for in terms of, you know, checking in, like there's a master list and all right, if teachers or administrators have heard from, you know, these kids have checked in. I think anxieties are rising and I just wanna make sure that we are checking in on maybe some of the more vulnerable ones or maybe the ones who isn't making them more vulnerable, so to speak.
Anime, I just wanna quickly say, you must be doing everything right because I have definitely gotten the email once or twice that, you know, we haven't heard from, from this one for a little bit. Yeah, you can smile on that if you want to. Or we haven't heard from this guy for a couple of days. So I will fully fess up to that. That that is at least happening in our house and I think that there are different considerations for every grade, but I would, I would say that from my end, I have definitely seen that every teacher and every, specifically at Blake, every cluster is definitely checking in on each kid and really assessing where they are and I know that they're having conversations about specific kids all the time.
I would love to, I'd love to hear, because I know we have the school principals. Really, what are the mechanisms that are happening? Because I must admit, you know, I have heard from Blake because my kid loves him checking in.
So I just added us both, sorry.
I see, he's been checking in, yay.
I agree with what Anime's saying. There is that one, you know, administratively, is there something that says we've checked? Yeah, we have had at least a face-to-face, we've spoken with each kid. It's a good, I think it is, you know, generally speaking, Jeff, I wholeheartedly agree. Nobody wants to be here, it's gonna be really hard. I don't think anyone's asking for five or six hours a day. I'm definitely not. But I think there's, you know, more, a little more structure and recognizing, just like adults don't always like their face loud on a Zoom, sometimes kids might not either. There could be other reasons why.
Anime, did you wanna, did you wanna hear from the principals? I couldn't hear what you said.
Yes, please. I'd love to hear their, their, their safety net mechanism.
Okay, Missy, could you start?
Can I, can I quickly ask? We're going to do public comment about this after we've discussed this topic, right? Because I know that there's
Yes.
questions popping up. Okay.
Hi, so at Memorial, all of our teachers are, as Jeff had mentioned, you know, working to check in with their families daily. For those families that we're not hearing from either at all or less than we would like to hear from, we have a list of those and we are connecting with them either through phone conversations or other mechanisms to try to make sure that the reason that they are not, if they haven't been in touch with us, is not because there is a technology need or some other need that we can help assist with from a school perspective. So we have a list, a master list of all of those families and are reaching out repeatedly to them.
Thank you.
Missy, Anna's okay. I'm sorry, we haven't checked in.
I'm glad to hear it, Leo.
I just hope everybody out there knows that even on school committee, we're, we're not doing this exactly right all the time because there is no right. You know, that's a lot of things that I've heard from parents, that they just feel like they can't do it right. There's no right right now. You do what you can do for your.
You can. That's all I can do, do your best you can.
Yeah.
Holly?
Hi, everyone. So yes, at WeLock, we, the teachers are, we're touching base with the teachers on a regular basis. We do have a document, any students that they have any concerns about. And also I have been meeting regularly with our school psychologist, guidance counselor and school nurse at our student update meetings and we talk about at-risk kids. We set a plan in place, what are we going to do to reach out to that child? And also we did offer a parent workshop on Tuesday and I think that that sort of helped. I've had a couple of Zooms with families just kind of setting up guidelines and expectations with students because they sometimes take information better from a school personnel than they do from a parent. I can say that as a parent and as a school personnel. So that seems to help if I sort of get in touch with a family and just sort of set up the expectation. So we are really on top of it and keeping a very careful and close list of the students that might need some support from us.
Thanks, Holly. Steve?
Thanks, Jeff. Hi, everybody. And Jeff, to your point, with four kids and a wife that's a teacher as well, like Jeff in first grade, it's, we're having trouble managing it here as well. So there is no right way. We're just trying to do the best that we can. But I think I would agree with my two colleagues at the elementary school. What we're doing is we're talking with teachers, they're checking in not only through Zooms, but Google Classroom for us. We're able to use Google Classroom and they're pushing assignments out through Google Classroom and giving feedback through there. So if there's times they're not hearing from a kid for maybe a day or two, knowing that every family situation is different, they're letting me know or the secretaries know and we're reaching out to families. In addition to that, I still have one that I received just last night about another Chromebook because now that the academics are ramping up through the different stages, they're realizing that with one Chromebook for family or with multiple kids. So I was just, it deals street on Tuesday morning and I'll be visiting Dale Street again tomorrow outside to meet with parents to drop off Chromebooks. So I think right now from Dale Street, we have about 30 plus Chromebooks, thanks to Owen and his team that have been deployed. So we're staying on top of that. It just wasn't the first week or two and we're continuously doing that now. Parents, we've either, that were ordering Chromebooks for their kids or couldn't, couldn't secure them now for one reason or another. We're doing that and similar to Holly, we are going, we're running guidance meetings with the nurse, school psychologist and guidance counselor. And in addition to that, we'll be running a parent workshop. We're gonna try to do it early next week, but now with the commissioner coming out with the, the essential learning of the power standards, that we're gonna wait till probably mid to end of next week to do that to make sure we're on the right page.
That's a great question. I know we're essentially one-to-one, six-to-12 throughout the district, right? And have we done, do we have some sort of survey or has some survey gone out around any kind of tech needs? And do we have them in the schools to provide, I guess is my question.
Yeah, we did that a while ago. Steve, you wanna?
Sure, yeah. Leo, thank you. Great question. Yeah, Owen and his team is really incredible. I know that, you know, from speaking with Dale Street and also Holly and I, we're distributing Chromebooks probably in that first week after we were put out, but yes, we, in every parent email that I've sent out, especially four and five, they're all, parents are requested to email me if they have any problems with technology. That continues to be on email. And Owen and Michelle and his team have deployed even more Chromebooks. We started with 15 or 16 and a lot of that wasn't the, the need that they didn't have at our internet. I found that there was more people in the house that, or the Chromebooks maybe were better off than the iPads with the Google Classroom, at least from the clientele at Dale Street. So I think, I think it's a team effort between, again, Owen and Jeff and Christine, you know, from the curriculum area and just getting those Chromebooks into parents' hands.
Just to piggyback off what Steve said, I think as we realize that this is for a longer period of time, some parents are thinking we can't sustain this with just the devices we have, and I've had a couple more reach out. I was actually at WeLock today distributing another one. So I think teachers are keeping a close eye on it and letting administrators know and then we're getting the technology out as needed.
And we, we had, we had it all in-house. We didn't have to purchase, yeah.
So we have, we have Chromebooks that we use for MCAS and because MCAS was canceled, we certainly have enough Chromebooks now, so we've been deploying those as well. Nat?
Sure. All right, I'm on. So it's just an anime, no judgment at all. As everyone said, if you came into my house, it looks like free-range chickens. I've shared. You know, as, as everyone said, if you came into my house, it looks like free range chickens. I've, I've shared that about my, my own children. So we're, we're doing the best we can too. Um, yeah, so from the, the start, you know, our concern was making sure that kids and families are okay. So we have a master sheet that's also organized by the cluster that's tracking check-ins, um, from both academic and also from the advisory piece. And one thing we talked about early on was the role of in local parentus definitely looks a little different now remotely in the sense of engaging parents much earlier on than we would if we were in face-to-face school. So typically if a kid didn't do an assignment, you know, we, then we want to grow the independence, but we need to loop parents in much earlier than we would if we were in a face-to-face school. So a lot of, you know, as Leo, with the one-to-one setup, we were, it was an easier transition in that way because kids were accustomed to Google Classroom and things, but emailing the student and copying the parent. Um, where, which that cycle, because as a parent, I'll say as a middle, of a middle schooler, I don't always know. So there's a lot of trust in there. So saying we, we need to not, it's not an issue of non-trust and also always making sure that the opening line is not, hey, where's your math work? Or where's this? It's checking and want to make sure everything's okay. What do you need? And then opening up that conversation, um, and similar to the elementary schools through our student support teams and our crisis teamwork plus teams that meets weekly, we're talking about those students and families and connecting with Russ Becker, Stephanie Worthley, um, and also just make, thinking about sibling relationships too. What are we knowing in that way? That's really important. And I think Tim, you made a very good point. There's been, there was an article that was sent in through LinkedIn yesterday about concerns about Zoom and bias and concerns of kids' presence on Zoom, um, which is something that we need to be mindful of. That like families might feel vulnerable about what, putting themselves on, on show in front of others and, you know, their environment in their home. So it's just, it was just a context that hadn't really thought about. So I think it, it's a consideration for us to think about.
Jeff, I mean, Nat, are you using the guardian feature on Google Classroom so the parents can get like kind of that parent view into the, into Google Classroom?
So most of the teachers, um, have given the, the classroom codes through the parents so that they can have access. But one thing we're still trying to balance is that, uh, helping the kids have that separate relationship from their parents as well. You know, there's a great webcast on Tuesday that talked about that right now, kids don't have that separation from their parents that they need to grow and develop. So we want to make sure we're trying to respect, but that's where that communication loop is that. Because it also, that big brother feel that you can have with adolescents, that's hard to try to manage that. Cause we don't want to also compromise the home relationship over school.
Right.
Because none of these parents signed up for homeschooling. So, uh, you know, and to your point, Leo, about the virtual schools, that's a very different model. And I think that's something for us to think about.
Yeah, I, I just don't want people to think, um, I had the opportunity to work with one as we were turning one of them around here in Massachusetts. And it was a lot of learning for me to see how that model would, to funk, in order to function well, you have to have that learning coach. So.
That's tough. And this is not homeschooling. I mean, I think sometimes people really feel like it is. And homeschooling is such a different animal. This is literally doing our best up to this point to prevent what could be a six-month summer slide, right? So that we can make sure that we have the baseline, as far as I understand in my conversations with all of you. So we have the baseline learning so that we can then start to move towards new content. And that that's always been kind of the progression that we've talked about, but it just seems so slow. And that we're dealing with a lot of equity issues across the state. And, and I have to say that today, um, as I was looking at kind of the, the MASC has a listserv where different people ask for advice about remote learning plans. And across the board in like districts to ours, but we're saying, we're, you know, parents are so unhappy and, and they feel like they're not enough and they're feeling overstressed. And we feel like, you know, that there's been this major crisis point around this announcement that we are not going back, uh, until September. And I do think that there is a crisis point where people have been kind of doing their best, right? And kind of pushing through, knowing maybe we wouldn't go back May 4th or maybe May 15th. But now all of a sudden it's looking that we're not even just talking about September. We're talking about September looking different than it might ordinarily have been. And I think people are tired today in that the, the frustrations come out. But I also think that we'll be able to re-group. But this is a period of time where we use the crisis to figure out what it is that we're doing best and what we're not doing as well.
I think that, that's the idea of the feedback is really to try to see, we're in it five weeks, you know, what, what do you think we're doing really well? And what should we improve on? And then like we have in all the other phases, really be thoughtful about it and, and go through it. We, we recognize how difficult this is for parents. It really is difficult. Um, and it's difficult for teachers and it's really having to take your profession and do a 180 with it and recreate it and reinvent it in a short period of time. Um, and, and I got to tell you, we, so a lot of the feedback I'm getting from, on the, on the thought exchanges, we just miss our kids. We just miss seeing our kids, you know, I mean, the, the best part of Zoom is seeing their faces and, but we just miss the interaction. I mean, that's, that's the hardest part for all of us, I think. I mean, I've said to some of you on the committee, the fact that, um, I come into the office and work in the office. It's, you know, maybe Michael's here sometimes and, and all the time and Andrea's here sometimes. We might have one secretary, but it's, it's that whole connection piece that we all work together and I can't go visit a school today. Like today would be a day I'd be in a school and visiting. I can't do that. So it, it changes, it really changes how we do our work and what we think about our work and it's, it's difficult for, for everyone. It really is. And I think, um, teachers are struggling with the fact that they just, they really miss their kids.
Just, this is Tim, just one, like some ideas, Jeff. I, I like what you're saying. My sense is there's somewhat of a pivot that, that we feel. But I think, um, the pivot will probably come on both sides, you know, like, um, things like PTOs and MCPE and site council meetings, I don't believe are happening. Maybe, maybe they are, but I think those are good opportunities. Like we all are getting used to this Zoom world. We have no choice. That's a good way to get at least some direct feedback. Um, you know, whether it's Melissa or Steven or others, like, I think that's sometimes the gap. You get the written instructions and people struggle with Zoom and sometimes people don't always pick up the phone and call the teacher. Um, but those are some things I, I think we all have to recognize that. We, we, hey, they, you know, I, I said it. A lot of people in the town volunteer and do great things for the school. In some cases, we're going to have to figure out ways to allow for that, you know, heightened level of interaction. Uh, you know, and that's not a, like, we're not doing anything wrong. It's just, as we realize now it's two months. You know, um, those are some little things that I think will, will help, you know, adding that to the structure as well, Steve.
Tim, just an FYI, Tim, we, uh, we actually, it's funny you mention it. We had a PTO meeting this morning at nine, um, just to talk with them. But I know that you, like you said, the site council, I know the elementary principals are kind of talking about that and how to schedule the meetings because looking for feedback from, from the community within your own school is really important. But yeah, the, the first time, the first meeting today was with Andrea Spears, Amanda Spears, rather, in the PTO. So, uh, it was good feedback from her and stuff. So, um, hopefully we can continue to have more groups like that. Great, great suggestion.
How was the attendance, Steve?
The attendance was low, you know?
Oh, really?
I don't know if people are still in bed though, Leo.
The other problem is that so many of our parents are literally doing, you know, they've set their school hours for their kids. And so the times that we might be able to have a meeting, like a PTO meeting at 9:00 AM, but their kids, especially at Dale Street and down, may be needing that kind of one-to-one coaching and that kind of one-to-one.
Well, I think, um, I attended Holly's, uh, parent, uh, Zoom guide this week. Um, and I have to say, aside from, you know, Zoom is fairly easy to use most of the time. No offense. Sorry, Anime. But the one thing I noticed was it would, I felt like people had a chance to, uh, have air, uh, airtime to talk about what was happening and what was going on. I thought it was healthy for everybody, including myself. And, um, uh, and I was able to get rid of two printer, two more printers out of my basement, uh, which is very nice. My wife is happy about that. But I think, um, perhaps, uh, maybe through the PTOs or through the schools, maybe setting up some times, uh, for the parents to do that, uh, around some of those strategies. And maybe when the essential items are released, um, whether it's a school committee meeting or some other meeting, perhaps there is an info session for parents on reviewing that, because that might be very helpful, uh, to helping them deliver. Uh, you know, whatever it is we're asking them to help, you know, help us deliver or help the teachers deliver, right? To help the structured support, if you will. And by the way, Holly, while I have the chance, if you want to find any of the third grade boys, uh, they're all in Worlds in Minecraft. So you, you might want to just set up shop there. So.
And Jess, just to clarify too, that was more of a PTO, uh, meeting check-in rather than a meeting with, uh, with Amanda.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Uh, we're just waiting for the high school. Robert?
Yeah.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Uh, so very similar to what the other principal said, you know, at the high school, we're making sure that we're connecting with our kids. We've asked our teachers to be the point person for that. Um, so they are checking in regularly, um, with students if they see that, um, students haven't been part of their, you know, Zoom sessions or any of their other check-ins. And if they are having a hard time getting ahold of students, then our guidance counselors are reaching out to them. So we've asked our guidance folks to be very proactive. We have, um, a list, an internal list that I'm, uh, a part of with the guidance counselors to make sure that, um, we are connecting with students. Um, in addition, both Russ Becker, who is our adjustment counselor and Dr. Worthley have maintained uh, contact with the families and students that they've been working with. So they, uh, they've continued that as well. Um, they've done individual, um, small and small group Zooms. Uh, we've done that with students as well. So, um, you know, I think our biggest challenge right now, which isn't too different than what my colleagues in other high schools are facing are just, you know, the engagement levels vary with some of the high school students. And, you know, our, overall, our engagement level is pretty high. Uh, but we do have a pocket of students that are, you know, having a hard time motivating themselves to, to get to some of this work. So, um, those have required a little bit more attention, but, uh, in general, the teachers have been pleased with the participation so far. And like I said, our guidance folks are really helping out to make sure we're making connections with students and parents if need be.
I imagine that there's a pretty high level of anxiety with our current 11th graders, um, in terms of looking at how they're possibly going to shape their world after senior year. Because I mean, I can't even say apply to college or whatever, because we don't, we don't know what that's going to look like in 18 months. Um, but what sorts of feedback are you hearing and what sorts of connections are our guidance counselors able to kind of make with them in terms around the college planning process? And are you noticing kids disappearing around that? And also seniors, you know, who are obviously kind of at the end of their school career, but are not, not really getting that closure that so many of us traditionally understand is, is that kind of moving on to adulthood kind of moment? Where, where are we around that?
Yeah, the seniors, it's been tough for them, Jess. It really has. Um, I, right before this meeting, actually, I was on and Dr. Worth, uh, Dr. Marsen joined us as well. We had about 60 seniors on a Zoom. We've, we've done that a few times now, just checking in with them. They're disappointed, obviously. Um, but it was good to see them. It's good for them to interact with each other. Um, I think most of you know, I have a senior as well, and I think that social piece is really challenging for them right now. And as a lot of them said, the academic, um, um, expectations for them right now seem almost secondary based on where they are in the school year. And they're kind of projecting where they normally would be if things were, you know, if we were in the building right now, they would be looking at, um, you know, the students would be, some students would be going off and doing senior projects. So they're definitely feeling the impact. They're definitely feeling a sense of loss. But, um, as we explain to them, you know, we're doing everything we can to, um, provide them with, you know, some good celebratory events at some point when we can. So, um, we're going to continue to keep them engaged. Uh, regarding the juniors, uh, we sent out a, a document, Stephanie Worthley out of guidance, sent out a document, I believe, last week to our junior parents that sort of spelled out a little bit of the feedback we're hearing from college, which is, um, a lot of information around colleges, recognizing that transcripts are going to look different, that they're going to take into account a lot of sort of what schools are dealing with right now with remote learning and things of that nature. So, um, I think it was very helpful for, for the high schools to receive that information from a lot of the colleges that our kids are applying to. Um, certainly their transcripts are going to look a lot different, but they're going to look a lot different across the board and across the country. So I think schools, colleges are recognizing that and, and are making the necessary adjustments. Um, I know Eric Orenberg, who coordinates all of our AP exams, those are coming up in a few weeks. Um, you know, the college board is looking at AP exams a little differently than they have as well. So, you know, I think it's, it's everyone recognizing that things are, are difficult and different right now. Um, so, uh, you know, we're going to just continue to try to get that information out to our parents. Junior parents obviously are concerned, but, um, you know, I think there will be a lot that will, um, be coming from our guidance folks to kind of alleviate some of the stress and concern.
I know that probably 10th grade parents are also just all of a sudden realizing that they're, they feel like their kids' high school experience and ability to kind of earn that good GPA is starting to get a little truncated as well. So I, I definitely would say to them to really be, um, proactive with their guidance counselors. And maybe once things settle down a little bit, we can start kind of talking to them a little bit about what this looks like, if we know. Because I think they're looking into a void right now and two years is not a long time at all. So I'm finding that more and more as my kids get older. So, thank you. Um, Anime, do you want to open this to?
I do, but before I do, I, we, we invited some students to participate, but sadly they could not get into this meeting either. Um, which is anyways, we're moving forward and, um, but I did get a text from Elizabeth Pansiaco. Um, Eliza, Vara and Carrie wanted to get in as well, but I've asked them to, to text me some info. But I just want to read some notes from Elizabeth Pansiaco, who is a 10th, the 10th grade representative. No, she's the freshman representative, right, Elizabeth? Her sister Caitlin's the sophomore. Okay. So I'll just read you what, um, she got to me and that was, um, some of her feedback was easy to communicate with teachers. Nice to see our grade and teachers on Zoom. A good amount of work that we are able to manage. Um, the whole administration has been very good with communicating with families and keeping them up to date. Um, let's see, maybe this is, create a syllabus for the week. Okay. So maybe this is under maybe things she'd like. Um, Robert, you would probably be able to, um, comment on this one. It says, create a syllabus for the week so we have a schedule. Many of the people I reached out to like a more structured, um, idea of what we are going to work on. And post a schedule of the Zoom meetings for the students. So maybe, I think this is her wish list or, you know, feedback from, from her fellow students. Um, people, people loved the video of the teachers sent out to us. The transition that the students and teachers were able to, um, to make, given the whole situation was very smooth in my eyes. A little less stressful. Um, very thoughtful students. So I think that, um, I think generating comments from our, our students is, is a positive thing as well. So, um, hopefully the other students will get back to me, um, before we close out. But, um, Robert, I'm sure you took notes. And, um, at this time, um, I will open to questions. So if we have 47 attendees, thank you very much. I think this might be a record. Um, so if folks have any questions, we, we will take input at this time. So I think there, for now, there's just one question and hopefully more will come up, but.
I have four, Anime.
You have four? All right. So why don't I read one and if you see the other three, that would be wonderful. Um, the first one is from the fun one. Is it possible for early elementary years, K through three, to consider instead of a larger Zoom call with 20-plus kids on the calls, smaller Zooms with about five kids and more curriculum focused? The larger group Zoom calls for the little ones is not seeming particularly impactful. I wonder if, um, Missy and Holly could address that.
Sure. Um, I would agree. Um, have, I've been on lots of different classrooms and I think teachers are ready to take that step. Um, they become very, very, um, good at using the Zooms. Um, and so we are actually moving towards, uh, a training around using the breakout room feature. And once teachers are trained in that, I think that will become very useful. Um, when, so that they might do a whole class and then break up into smaller breakout groups. I, there are lots of teachers that are offering several times throughout the day too, where teachers, where students can visit in smaller groups. So I think that yes, you will be seeing more and more of that.
I echo what Holly has said, um, both the breakout features, but we also have some staff who is trying that as well to offer smaller group, um, meeting times. I think for many reasons, we're finding that is helpful. One is what was talked about before, and that is that, you know, sometimes a Zoom with 20 or 22 kindergarten kids is pretty overwhelming um, for the kids who are on that. And, um, I think that our, our staff is kind of coming to that organically and realizing that the smaller group might be a better feature too.
to that organically and realizing that the smaller group might be a better feature, too.
I'd also recommend that you can, if any of the aides are still participating, they can go in as co-hosts and be able to split out in those rooms, those breakout rooms. So we've been doing that on the Cape Cod Collaborative that I've been helping out through this process. And it works out very well.
And Leah, I can tell you at Memorial, a lot of our teaching assistants and BTs and other support staff have been jumping in on those Zooms to connect with the kids as well.
So, and they don't have to pay for Zoom accounts. You just make them basic users as part of Medfield. And Owen, and then the teacher can then assign them as a co-host with them to help out. Because like you said, navigating those big groups is, I'll tell you, it's been, it's been tough in this house as well. That, not the, I think the smaller groups will work out well instructionally.
Super. I've got another question here from Karen Peters, or it's rather a comment, just a comment. I would encourage more sharing on best practices between schools. I shared my third grader son's remote learning schedule with my son's fifth grade teacher, and she loved it and adopted it for herself and is working so much, and it is working so much better for us. Sheen and Birchman. So that was a thoughtful comment. Jess, do you see?
Yeah. So Karen also had another question, and she, perfectly fine, Karen. She says, "My apologies if I missed this, but is there any discussion about how our kids will be evaluated and assessed as they prepare to enter the next grade level in terms of their curriculum level?"
I asked that question earlier of Jeff.
So, I, I mean, we can answer that quickly now to kind of go back over that, since it was part of this discussion. But then Karen, I'm really happy to write you after this, if you want me to kind of do a capsule. So-
Fair to, to, I think if people have jumped in, that's it.
So, so Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah. So that's part of what we're doing over the summer, as far as our research and development, our D-time, is really look at what that baseline is going to be, utilize the assessments that we already use to establish baselines, and then really try to meet the kids where they are in terms of their knowledge based on the, on the assessment. So we're, we're going to be working on that in the summer, and we're, we're going to meet the kids where they are in the fall, whether that be August or September, whenever we go back. But that's definitely on our radar and something that we're working on.
And Anime, can you see the one from Renee?
No.
Okay. Renee is asking if emails, which she sent us an email, will, will email sent prior to the meeting be addressed, or does she need to ask again here?
I think she's referring to the emails she sent to us.
Right. Do you, do we feel, do you guys feel comfortable encapsulating that? And Renee, do you feel comfortable with us summarizing your, summarizing your, your question?
You could activate and let her talk, too.
Yeah, why don't we just have her talk?
I have no, is that just answer live?
No, Owen can do it.
Okay, Owen.
Please. Renee, Holly?
Okay, here's one second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. She says it thinks it was already sort of addressed. I'm sorry, Renee, we have the funkiest little screen here. So, but do you want to talk to us anymore about that? Renee?
I have unmuted her, but it looks like she's showing up.
Okay. Renee, you know, you can always reach out to any one of us if you, if you feel like it wasn't, if there's any part of that that wasn't addressed. But I think Renee's question in general was, you know, really talking about how will kids be assessed? How will we know that things are moving on? And how will we start addressing new information and new curriculum? So, and it's, it's a reasonable question. Plenty of people have asked this. And she says she's okay. All right. Thank you all so much, by the way, for bearing with us. This is, as it perhaps is to you, or maybe not.
Can I just add one, one that maybe helped just as far as a lens is, things we've talked about, about, to that question about, you know, meeting kids where they're at, in many ways, it's just on a larger scale of a kid that moves into Medfield that has never been in Medfield before. We really don't know, I mean, we have an idea. So when they come in in September, it's that kind of approach. Or if they come in mid-year, we will assess where they're at and do that. I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but to know that that's, that's what our charge is each day. So I think just in that way, knowing that we have a different idea on our curricular end, but we'll have to see what that plays out with diagnostics in the benchmarking piece, too. So I think that's something that we've talked about as counselors as well, about how we're putting those approaches in place for all kids, too, in that way.
You know what I thought? It may be a piece of Renee's email. Sorry, Renee, but I think it would be helpful for, you know, we have 49-
That's comprehensive, Renee. So we appreciate it.
No, and I think other parents might be thinking about this as well. And that is, you know, one kid at, you know, same school, different grades, but one kid getting, you know, a good chunk of work and another kid being done within, you know, Speedy Gonzalez. I know there are different learning styles, but I suppose, Nat, could you talk to that in terms of, I think the discrepancies sometimes?
Yeah, I, I think what I would want to know is, I think the best thing would be just like a typical schools, I'd want to have a connection with the teachers directly to hear a little bit more about that, just to make sure. Because, you know, one thing we're really talking about is trying to have a coherent approach and be very consistent across the board. But that said, each kid is different and, and what that looks like. So that may sound like a gray answer. I mean, our, our whole approach is that there isn't a big left field turn from sixth to seventh to eighth, or from seventh to eighth to ninth in those ways. But I think if that's what a parent's experiencing, I would love to connect the teachers and the kids to get a better sense of what that looks like. So I think that is something that we know we're talking about is, what's the feedback loop for parents and making sure about what the expectations are? And is there a disconnect in that and as to why?
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah. No, thank you.
The first intervention is always to talk to your child's teacher. I mean, I think that's one of the things that we really want to-
Yeah. And I would say to accelerate that more in this remote period.
Right.
Just, just in that way on both ends. And that's one thing, you know, as I said, is that for our teachers to reaching out much more versus first step, you know, you want to talk to the kid. And also that, but there, there is that natural gap now, or unnatural gap with schooling, but in that way.
I would just, I, I thought Renee's comments at the end, I thought were, were notes that I actually put, and I was, I was going to summarize. But just, I think things we all know, and, but, you know, like, she said written goals and objectives by the grade, a little more, more structure, clear expectations and accountability. Actually, she said both parents, teachers, or students and teachers, I think parents need, you know, I think it's students, teachers, and parents. Accountability is an important word here. You know, I just think some of these things were well, really well thought out. And then everybody wants more teacher feedback. We all know, I've seen it so many times, if any of us pick up the phone and call the teacher and ask for it, we usually get it. Right? People have to be willing to do it. You know, I haven't seen, I've never seen that as a parent here. But I just thought, you know, some of those were, were, you know, were appropriate. That, that's the theme I'm hearing from a lot of others around town, which she reinforced.
I have an email that was sent from someone who couldn't stay on the meeting and asked if I would address this or ask this. They want to know how the district is going to address emotional struggles of children who are transitioning between school buildings in the fall. What special provisions can they provide to all children who might have struggles? So that might be a merry question.
Well, we've, we've, we've talked about in the leadership team of doing some sort of virtual move update for the kid, so that you'll have an opportunity to meet their teachers for next year virtually. So to continue that practice that we started a few years ago that allowed kids to kind of meet their teacher next year and get a sense of what the building looks like. So they, they may not get a sense of what the building looks like, but they'll certainly get the opportunity to meet their teachers. So I know that the elementary principals have begun that planning and something that we're going to implement by the end of the year.
And I am never surprised by how incredibly creative we can be about, with technology and everything else, about how we integrate kids into our schools. You know, I'm sure that there are tours that they can take virtually and everything else, so that it isn't completely, you know, everybody's going to be new, but we'll, we'll give them as much information, I'm sure, as possible.
We have a few more comments in there.
Okay, I don't, do you see them, Jess?
I do. I see, well, all students advance to the next grade. This is Julia. Even those on IAPs? Or do you expect many to repeat their current grade? If you, anybody want to address that? I mean, I think, yeah.
I don't, I don't, we don't expect to have kids repeat the next grade. No, the current grade, excuse me. Yeah, we don't, we don't expect that.
And Chrismy Q. Potts says, "It would be great to hear how specials like art and music are going at the various schools. Many kids seem to be exercising their creative muscles during this time, which is so great for their emotional well-being." So.
Any of the principals want to take that?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that one, Jeff. So speaking at Dale Street, and I think I can speak for Missy and Holly as well, just because we collaborate a lot at the elementary, is that, that what the teachers are doing when they're sending their message in the morning, whether it be video or email, what they're doing is they're giving the expectations to three or four content area days, roughly around a half hour. But also in that time, they're giving which special they have for that day. So if they have health, they might say, hey, we have this for math, we're doing this for ELA, but just remember to visit Ms. Loffner's website, she has this. So what we're doing is we're trying to do one special a day. And then I can also say for the music that both Barbara Oxholm and Brenna and Ryan are doing a fantastic job. They're reaching out to their kids. I know they've had Zooms with them already and trying, the teachers are also incorporating, you know, different things on their websites or what we call learning hubs at Dale Street in regards to practicing instruments and stuff like that. So we really, you know, try to highlight the whole child. It's really important to us. And even though this is a new normal for all of us, we still want to make sure that we're incorporating all of our specials. Some of them, like Christina Delaney in art, for instance, she's doing a great job with Padlet. So kids are uploading their work onto Padlet and stuff like that. And some of the kids have, now that they have email in fourth and fifth grade, have even reached out to their teachers looking for certain feedback. So each day, they're highlighting a special to go along with all the content areas that are there to answer that one.
I've also seen many of the teachers who my kids are working with trying to integrate art into, and other creative muscles into their content. So, you know, from math to social studies to kind of the optional activities that kind of kids do on Zoom. And occasionally, that goes over well in my house, and sometimes it doesn't. But it, but again, it's about using each kid's, providing each kid multiple ways to learn in a day.
Do you see the comment from Karen Peters, Jess?
Yeah.
It's at the top.
I think that that's the one, actually, that Anime read. This is the one about encouraging more sharing.
Yes.
Did I take that?
Okay. I think it dismissed.
Okay. I can speak a little bit.
I have one more. Mary McNiff. And then unless there are other, "For music at Dale, is Brenna reaching out to parents directly or students? As a parent, I haven't heard anything from anyone in the music department."
So what we had asked all teachers to do at Dale Street, because we were new with email, you know, after, you know, Mark, whatever the date was, March 13th. So a lot of the teachers, both classroom and specialists had reached out to kids and parents like the first time, and then they're reaching out just to kids, because we're getting the feedback that a lot of parents, we're getting inundated with a lot of emails. I know specifically having four kids at my own house and having four different teachers and all the stuff that I'm getting are my emails from them. So I will double check with Brenna, because I can't answer that, you know, articulately right now, because I haven't spoken with her today or most recently. But I will check with her. But a lot of the teachers are reaching out just through the students' email. And that was basically based on feedback that parents were giving, both the teachers and myself.
All right. And Mary says, "Thank you." And Chris says-
Please welcome.
So, all right.
Thank you. All right. Any other takers? Nope. All right. I think we can go on to our next agenda item. Thank you, principals, for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And Mary, of course, thank you. Let's see, next on the agenda is high school student scholarship award approvals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, every year, prior to the end of the school year, we have a wonderful ceremony for our seniors, and we have to allocate scholarship money that has to be approved for you first, for you to release that money. So I'm going to go through the long list. I don't have my reading glasses today, so I have to really hold it out a little farther here. So here, here are the list of scholarships. Two $500 scholarships, Medfield High School Scholar-Athlete Awards, one $1,000 David E. Madera's Theater Society Award, two $1,000 Medfield High School Theater Society Awards of Distinction, five $500 Medfield High School Theater Society Awards, two $500 Student Council Awards, two $250 Student Council Unsung Leader Awards, eight $250 National Honor Society Awards, and 11 $100 National Honor Society Awards. I ask that you approve those as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Bram?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook, yes, the motion passes. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Actually, there is one other comment in the question box. And so Stephen Reich from 656 Main Street, "Is remote learning going to evolve, be different in any way now that we know school is not opening this year?"
I think that's been addressed.
Yeah. So I can quickly give a synopsis if you want. Jeff, you want to?
That's fine. I mean, he got on late, so he missed that, that part. But, which is fine. Yeah, that's fine. So Steve and others that came on late, what we're doing right now is gathering input from teachers, gathering input from parents, starting tomorrow at noon when we release that thought exchange, and then waiting upon guidance from the state on looking at essential learnings that they have identified for students for the remainder of the year. So we're looking at all that input, and then we're going to be doing some revisions and some, some highlights to our remote learning plan, which will include differences. I mean, looking at using Zoom differently. And, and so we're definitely looking at creating that input and then making some changes along the way. That's, that's, Steve, that's what we're looking at right now.
Thank you, Steve. All right. So next agenda item is?
Oh, and Dylan Oliveto just said that I want to say in thank you full for all the hard work teachers have done for remote learning. So-
That's nice. Thank you.
As have we, we are all. Thank you very much. Now, so I don't see it anymore.
All right. We have a change of May 4th, school committee meeting to May 7th that we need to vote on.
Right. The original schedule for May 4th was annual town meeting.
Oh, right.
So we could just move that over to the 7th, if that works for you folks.
And a motion to approve moving the May 7th meeting, unless we have any other additional, you know, did I just step on you? I stepped on you, Anime. Did I?
Definitely. No.
No? Okay. So motion to approve moving the May 4th to May 7th, school committee meeting?
Second.
Great. So I'll take a roll call vote. Jessica Riley?
Aye.
Leo Bram?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
Motion passes. We've got a new date.
Do we have a time for that? Do you think, the 5 o'clock or the 7?
I believe.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other items since posting?
I have a quick question. May 4th is the new date for the election of the, in town. There, in light of the fact that the schools are not reopening and nothing looks to be reopening anytime soon, will there actually be any in-person voting, or will it all be through absentee?
There is in-person voting.
There is in-person voting.
There will be social distancing. I don't know what they're doing about masks, so bring your mask.
Yeah.
But go for the absentee vote, quite honestly, if you're tuned in, I would say.
I think they're also hoping for nice weather, but I think we should definitely promote the absentee ballot that you can download on the town.medfield.net website under Town Clerk. And it's important, it's imperative to sign your application. And it's really quite easy. You can email it to Marian Binaldi and binaldi@medfield.net. I didn't think we were going to do this now, but it's actually helpful for the folks who are tuned in. So, and it's a quick turnaround time when you- So, and it's a quick turnaround time when you get your ballot. So I definitely encourage folks to get an absentee ballot.
On website, and I think it came out in the patch today, too, the instructions about how to vote. So you can look that up on the patch as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Super. Any other items since posting?
I have no others, Madam Chair.
Great. So on to old business, Dale Street School.
So we had a working session on Patriots Day, as we have every single Monday, going over, you know, the latest and greatest for the project. I know we had our building committee meeting on Wednesday evening, and they established a subcommittee for communications, and I know Anne Mae, I think you're the chair of that subcommittee. So I know we have some additional meetings and feedback that's going to be gathered around the grade configuration. So I know Anne Mae, if you wanted to talk about that, but I know we're looking at another public hearing and also a survey, so.
Yes, so we're charged with community engagement and input, and I think it's important, moving forward, that we really get the word out. These are, it's going to be a challenge, yet also some opportunities, you know, opportunities to listen, to learn, to tweak, to you know, really to engage as many townspeople as possible. So yes, we're going to have a digital survey and also have an informational session. And Tim Knights on that as well, and some other community members, Tim Bonfati and Sharon Tatro and Tracy Rogers. So I think that'll be, it'll be a great exercise for us, I think. And there's, there's, there have been some thoughtful feedback from community members that that aren't in the school system, and I think we need to be cognizant of the other sectors within our community. So I think it'll be a worthy exercise, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great.
Super. Um, let's see.
Want to share any highlights from last night, but last night, other than the, the subcommittee looking at changing the timeline as far as our submission of PSR, we're looking at a date that was prior to the summer, June date, and now we're looking at submitting all of that in September. So that, that will delay things a couple of months, and really gives us an opportunity, number one, to recognize the fact that we're not living in the world we were a couple of months ago. And also, as Anne Mae said, get additional feedback from the community on what they think in terms of the grade configuration. So we will, I think that the timeline has changed. It was, you know, we first started this a long time ago, we're looking at a September 2023 opening for a new school. And it looks like that's probably going to be, based on our new timeline, September 2024. So the whole, from the start of the project until right now, it looks like we're going to be delayed about a year going forward. So I think we need to do it correctly. Learn from what happened in Medfield years ago, when building projects failed, and go forward with that, because we want to make sure that, that we answer all the questions and make sure there are no issues, that no one can say we didn't do what we need to do in our due diligence for this entire project. So that's what we're doing.
Indeed. All righty.
Anne Mae, can I ask, looking at the milestone schedule, it looks like the next public meeting or input for the town to discuss the grade configuration is on the 14th of May. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, we have a meeting next week, so we will fine tune the dates. But yes, we're essentially hopefully going to aim for that. We, we have to have, our, our goal is to have a public input session, informational session, before we vote, you know, all the information from the community, from the schools, et cetera, and to make a vote.
I was just trying to get the day out there, so people that are maybe watching would kind of checkmark that day, so they can tune in and give us their input.
Lovely.
Subcommittee, Anne Mae, you mentioned last night that you'd want to get the survey out prior to that, so that maybe some of the feedback from the survey can be incorporated into that.
Absolutely, yeah. Wonderful. All right. Anything else that, Leo, do you want to say anything about our meeting last night?
Well, you guys summed it up pretty well. I'm excited about the communications committee. And I actually have another volunteer who'd like to participate in that as well. So I will send you his name. And I think that's going to be, help, you know, not only get the word out about the project and get more interest around it. So I'm excited about that, so.
Yeah, and to hear concerns, you know, we want to make sure that we're really targeting all aspects, so great.
I also, I would say I was very pleased with, you know, with the approach that Selectman Markucci was taking around, you know, making sure that, you know, Medfield is prepared as well, you know, not to slow our velocity down, make sure we're prepared and prep for projects, because as a result of obviously the current state of affairs, there could be additional monies made available for shovel, shovel-ready projects, as it was done in the past, past two recessions. So, you know, it's one thing that may be advantageous for Medfield to take advantage of that, so. Melissa, I'm dropping her off, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, so how about the fiscal year 21 budget?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, we've had conversations with the warrant committee, but at the state level, everything is looking put on hold with the budget. So they've actually asked us at the state level to kind of take a step back and, and let them figure out what they're going to do in terms of their budgets. They typically have the governor's budget that was already released prior to COVID-19. Then typically get a senate budget and a house budget, and then ways and means, figure that out, and then a budget is released. So what's happening this year is the governor already released his budget, and we've looked at those numbers. Part of that was the Student Opportunity Act, that was going to give us, I think, an additional $71,000. They've, they've backtracked on all that right now in terms of the Student Opportunity Act. They're not sure they're going to be able to fund that for next year, for FY21. So they've actually scrapped the entire governor's budget, and they've begun a whole new budget process. So the senate and the house are going to do one budget, not two separate budgets this year because of the timeframe. And so that's what, you're waiting to hear some of that. Again, Medfield doesn't get a lot of state aid, but it gets enough to make a huge impact in our budget, both the town and, and the school side. So we've been working with the town and their numbers, and what we've done is we were asked to cut $1 million by the warrant committee. Remember, we came in at a 4% increase, and where we are right now is a 1.30% increase after cutting $991,000. So I'll go through some of this, I'll turn some over to Michael to kind of go back and forth on this. But if you remember the original request that you had, that you voted on in January, was $37,936, which was an increase of $1.4 million, or 4.02%. So now we're looking at a reduction, which brings our increase to only 474,145, or an increase of 1.3%. If you remember, you know, just, just staffing alone, looking at contractual increases, just staffing alone was around 1.3 million. So that creates a problem for us right from the start, if our budget's only increasing $474,000. And we need 1.3 to open the doors to everyone, then, then that creates an issue right there. So Michael and I spent a lot of time going through this and reducing the budget. And we started with non-payrolls. So I'll go through the non-payroll for you, just so you get a sense, and then maybe Michael can hop in on the payroll part once we get to that, because he has some, he has some data around unemployment that he could share with you as well. So we looked at the, the non-payroll, because we wanted to make sure that, as I kiddily sometimes say, count paperclips through all this, and make sure that the cuts were appropriate in that we weren't just cutting staff, because that's not our intent in this process. So I looked at, and I'll go right down the entire line here that we have, and I know it's long and lengthy, but I think everyone needs to understand the process that we went through. So we first looked at principal supplies and reduced that by $600. High school textbooks by 800, high school general supplies by 8,000, middle school supplies by 2,000, middle school general supplies by 4,000, Dale Street principal supplies 1,000, Dale Street general supplies 4,600, Dale Street textbooks 3,000, Dale Street curriculum materials 7,000, Memorial principal supplies 1,000, Memorial supplies 4,600, Memorial textbooks 2,400, Memorial curriculum materials 6,400, WeLock principal supplies 1,000, WeLock supplies 4,600, WeLock textbooks 2,400, WeLock curriculum materials 6,000, high school library supplies $360, high school books, high school books and library resources 1,800, middle school library supplies 400, middle school books and library resource 1,000, Dale library supplies 340, Dale books and library resources 1,000, Memorial library supplies 340, Memorial books and library resources 1,000, WeLock library supplies 340, WeLock books and library resources 1,000, KDA reading supplies 2,620, family consumer science at the high school 2,100, family consumer science at the middle school 1,300, high school English textbooks 1,000, high school English supplies 1,300, middle school English textbooks 800, middle school English supplies 500, middle school, high school, middle school math textbooks 1,800, high school math supplies 8,000, excuse me, 800, middle school textbook 700, middle school math supplies 760, high school science textbooks 1,600, high school science supplies 6,000, middle school science textbooks 200, middle school science supplies 2,000, high school social studies supplies 600, high school, excuse me, middle school social studies textbooks 800, social studies supplies in the middle school 700, social studies textbooks 900, world language textbooks 1,800, world language supplies 500, world language supplies, excuse me, the middle school 440, Dale Street world language general supplies 450, WeLock world language general supplies 450, high school world language equipment 250, middle school world language equipment 250, health and PE K-12 supplies 5,320, art K-12 8,860, music K-12 supplies 4,600, health services and nursing 2,900, guidance general supplies of the high school 380, guidance general supplies at the middle school 200, guidance other expenses at the high school 140, guidance other expenses at the middle school 120, guidance testing at the high school 180, guidance other expenses district-wide 200, athletic supplies 600, computer replacement 100,000, technology PD 1,000, curriculum other expense 1,200, PD conference and travel 13,000, special education transportation 25,000, sewer and water 79,500, and that's something that we're working on the town with, as we've, we've talked in years past, that many school districts don't pay sewer and water, so we're just working with the town on that. So if we can't get that agreed upon, then that's another 79,500 to cut out of the budget. Travel custodians 3,000, policy administration supplies 1,000, policy administration conference and travel 1,000, policy administration school committee expenses 1,000, for a total non-payroll cut of 346,800. So that's looking at the reductions on the non-payroll side. And then we, we had to go on to the, unfortunately, to the payroll side. And the first one that we did was a non-union increase, so we, we froze all non-union salaries for FY21. So that was a reduction of $95,000. Michael, want me to keep going on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'll keep going, and you can talk about the unemployment piece.
Sure.
All right. And then we looked at how we could equitable, how equitable we cut based on enrollment and how we could make changes. So we looked at a memorial teacher, which is probably going to be an additional kindergarten teacher. Now, that may change, because right now enrollment's telling us we don't need that additional teacher, but if we get a spike in enrollment as we get closer to the school year, then we'll have to reevaluate that and add that teacher in there. A WeLock teacher, a Dale Street teacher, and then secondary teachers, we looked at four FTEs, and we're not sure what that's going to be in terms of enrollment. So it could be one middle school teacher, it could be with three high school, it could be one high school, three elementary, three middle school, it could be two and two, we're not sure what that looks like. That's based on scheduling and enrollment. Looking at reducing one, one FTE secretary in the district, reducing maintenance staff to a .5, that's full-time right now, and then central office, cutting someone full-time to .3, and then reducing nurse .4 FTE, which is a total of 9.2 FTEs, or $644,330, which gets us to the 991,000. When you reduce staff, there are all kinds of unemployment issues, as you can imagine. So Michael has calculated that and did share that with the warrant committee, so that the town could have that information to begin planning on their budget as well. Michael, if you could do that?
Sure. So under the current unemployment law, and with the CARES Act, the federal government will reimburse any government entity 50% of unemployment compensation paid by any agencies that are part of the government, which the towns are. And that will go from March 13th all the way through to the end of the year. So I did a calculation for the town, saying the max claim per week per employee is going to be $823 per week per employee. That's the maximum that the unemployment's going to issue out. So if you have nine employees, that's a total weekly claim of $7,407. Total number of weeks currently, with the federal requirement, is that they can, that employees can collect for 43 weeks currently, under the new CARES Act. So if you multiply that by 43 weeks, total unemployment claim is about 318,501. 50% of that is going to be reimbursed by the CARES Act, so it'll be 159,250.50 that we're projecting that the town will have to increase in their unemployment line item.
Thank you, Michael. So, you know, we, we don't know if this is the beginning of our reduction, or the end of it, or if it's, if it's too an aggressive cut at this point, we're not sure, because we're just kind of waiting and seeing what's going on. We had a department head meeting with the town yesterday, and Christine said, we're just going to hold off on the budget right now, that there's no need to contact warrant committee at this point, and we're going to go from there. So we're kind of, you know, I guess town meeting scheduled for June 15th, and I'm not sure if that's going to take place, but if we need to have a resolution on before that, I know that. So that's where we are with the budget. I know that at some point, we need to have a subcommittee meeting with Jess and Megan to review this again, and get the input. But I think at this point, what we've done in the past with reductions is, we try to give you what we think are recommendations for reductions, and it's your budget, so you, you tell us where you want to go. And you don't have to do that right now, but we usually do that through a subcommittee, and then we can, you know, make decisions based on that. But we tried to minimize the impact to staff and students. That was our goal, to do that, and that's why we went through every single line item and cut, you know, lots of non, non-payroll line items, but you know, with a number like 991, it's kind of impossible to get there without reducing staff.
I must say, it's just, it's, it's heart-wrenching to hear, you know, the staff cuts that just in. There's no words with my frustration. However, I realize we're in a difficult situation. So townwide have, have other departments have had to make such extreme cuts to their budgets as, as well, because a million dollars is, as you say, it's, it's people. It's, it's not just supplies and things like that.
So I would say, I don't know all the specifics on the town side, but they have been asked to reduce their budgets, they have. I don't know the, I know the percentages, I don't know what that looks like, but I know that they absolutely have been asked to reduce their budget. And just, just by, just as a frame of reference, just this reduction of a million dollars requested prior to COVID-19. We're not even considering the impact of the state losing $5 billion of revenue, and in the town losing revenue with Neil's tax and those types of implications, too. That's not even factored into this. This million dollars came before the COVID-19 issue, so.
And Jeff, if, just to clarify, I know that there's been a lot of thought that most schools will be given additional funds through the federal government to make up for some of the educational loss, or, you know, but that looks as though it's going to be based specifically. that looks as though it's going to be based specifically on our um, percentage of uh, free and reduced or how, that's not.
So they're going to use, so they told us now, they've told us three times. So I, I've heard it three times at the state level that the dissemination of that federal stimulus money to school districts will be done uh, through the mechanism of Title One.
Right.
Which a few years ago would have been fine for us because we were receiving Title One funds. We no longer receive them now. Um, we did hear something for the first time uh, today's Thursday, it must have been Tuesday. For the first time, they said there's going to be additional money that the governor is going to get at his discretion that may be used for districts that aren't going to get money through that uh, dispersment. So there's a, there's a slight hope there. Um, I think the town will get money because there's, I, I believe that they, it's over five, I forget the exact number because I don't want to be quoted on it, but it's a um, over a billion dollars that's going to be allocated to cities and towns uh, to, from an municipal budget relief. And, and I think I said at the last meeting too. I was a superintendent in the last recession and the only thing that that got us through was the stimulus that the Obama administration sent. I mean, that was the only thing that got any of us through. So we're hoping that the federal government can step up again and help us with this and it hopefully goes a lot quicker and, and easier than some of these loans that stories I've been hearing um, from, from uh, small businesses. So I'm hoping that, that that happens again because that was that era money, as it was called back then, was the only commitment that saved uh, school districts from massive layoffs and, you know, huge class sizes and all that. Uh, but, but again, I, I just need to say that this million dollars was asked before this COVID nineteen. So even if we do get stimulus money, I'm not sure how much it's going to impact us and where we are right now with our, the town budget and the school budget.
And Jeff, isn't one of the reasons why the town administrator Christine had asked to kind of hold off a little bit on the budget at this point is because they're not sure how much money they'll be getting from the state on the town side?
Right. Yeah, no one knows right now. Yeah. So they want us to really just sit back and let, and let's see what the, what the state is going to give us. We hear, we've heard uh, doom and gloom um predictions for F Y twenty one and twenty two from the state. So they, you know, the commissioner said to us just be prepared for a tough couple of years. So um, I, I think it's going to be like oh, seven, oh, eight, oh, eight, oh, nine, whenever that was that we had those real tough fiscal years. It's going to look just like that again. I would say the difference that this has versus the, the former uh, recession is that the state now has five point four billion dollars in its rainy day funds, which they did not have in oh, eight, oh, nine. So hopefully they're going to break into those rainy day funds and, and support school districts and support towns so that we don't have to make uh, massive layoffs across the board. But um, I'm sure, I'm just not sure how that plays into um, the midfield situation right now, given the fact that we were asked to do this prior to that.
Jeff, is there any, um, any realization of savings at all um, because of the closures? Um, anything like power and uh, utilities, transportation?
Yeah, definitely. So uh, Michael's been working really hard uh, negotiating with the transportation company and I, at our next school committee meeting, um, our hope is to have a contract amendment to you so that you could um, approve and sign a contract amendment that will, will be a reduction in transportation costs in the district. Obviously, um, we feel strongly about our bus drivers being, being paid. We've, it's been well documented in this community. We all feel that way. Uh, we paid our, our March bill in full. And now we're negotiating what that would look like, essentially just paying labor costs uh, to our bus company versus paying the labor cost, the fuel costs, the maintenance costs, all those things that they're not incurring right now because we're not in session. So we should have something uh, to you at the next meeting that hopefully you'll approve the amendment.
Jeff, can we also, is there a way to confirm that they are actually paying their bus drivers? Because the rumors that they had laid them off and I know that they were making more in unemployment than they were. Um, so is there a way to confirm that they are actually in fact paying the bus drivers?
Michael, correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that they're still in unemployment. Is that correct?
They're under, yes, they kept them, they kept them on unemployment because they're going to be receiving more money through the uh, CARES Act.
So then in that case, we, any money we're paying them is not being paid in labor costs. They're just going to credit us moving forward?
Um, we're, we're looking to try to get some, some substantial savings in F Y twenty um, that will hopefully help us going forward. So that's what our goal is. And I think at our next meeting, we'll be able to do that. I don't know if anyone saw, there was a, an article, and I think it was the Wall Street Journal yesterday uh, from a restaurant owner. And I thought of our bus, uh, bus drivers because he, he said, I can't open my, my restaurants until August because all of the people that work in the restaurants are making more money not working um, than working in the restaurant. And I think that's a similar situation with our bus drivers right now. From what they've communicated to us is that they're, they're making more money with the stimulus money and the unemployment than they were when they were driving. So um, it creates, it creates a unique situation with that. So and then the, I think, Michael, what about um, anything in terms of utilities? I know you've been working on that too.
Yeah, so we haven't received the um, uh, we did just receive the March's utility bills. Um, but March is not going to be an indicator of savings because we were still in school for, uh, you know, um, until they yes, uh, so we, we're not going to see savings in March. We're going to probably see some savings in April, uh, but we're not going to be able to determine those savings until probably May. Uh, I can tell you that, um, you know, the state law basically says that we turn off our heating system April fifteenth. We did that so because there was no students and staff in the building. So that's already been done. So uh, you know, we already um turned off our boilers. Um, we are only keeping us um lights on for safety uh, reasons. So we're required to have some lights on due to safety reasons in the middle of the night. Um, but otherwise it's on um unoccupied mode. All buildings have been on, 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 on occupied mode since probably, I believe it was April first.
So essentially the only lights that go on are when the custodians are working in that area?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Do you want to have anybody ask questions about that? Looks like there.
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, just a, a thought, um, there's obviously puts and takes. But as, as we do, there is some savings we may see. And keep eyes and ears open. Is there any technology spend that might help improve, you know, over the next couple of months? And obviously then there's a F Y twenty one budgeting. But I, you know, it's just something to think about. We, we, there are some rewards that you gain by doors being shut. Um, but there's needs that we have on technology in order to try to, you know, improve things. So I don't know.
I think once, I think once we, so we, we do expend uh, previous years' funds when we do, um, we prepay special education uh, tuition. So we do that every year. Uh, we started doing that about five or six years ago. Uh, but now if we have savings, we're, Michael's going to work with the town accountant to see if we can do some of that, Tim, where that's, that's part of what we would like to do.
Yeah, just in, any, I think even near term, you know, like Owen's doing an amazing job. Is there a Zoom specialist or advanced, you know, service or somebody that says, hey, here's some ways you got, you know, you and your staff, everyone can do a little better? Or is there metrics and reporting around like Zoom or whatever, you know, different things that help us um, with checks and balances and the, the goal of the checks and balances is to find the outliers, right? Um, so, so not, there's plenty on your plate already, but um, you know, just something to think about the, the, you know, Michael, the door is being shut. Give us some dollars, technology, you know, everybody needs more help.
So we are also having a really significant decrease in revenue as well with uh, many of our other programs, we know. Uh, so I'm not sure. You know, I, I think that in the discussions I've certainly had with Jeff, and I'll let him speak to this, you know, the, the money that we have paid forward in previous years has not been an enormous amount. And it's one of the few things that we can do from year to year with um with our funds. And the fact that we are now actually uh, kind of in the position where we're trying to manage decreased revenue in this year, I'm not sure that that, in my mind, would be a a fund that I would be uh, or a use for um, a use that I would feel comfortable with to, to kind of fine tune that. But that's obviously something that we'd have to really investigate, you know.
I, I just think whether it's F Y twenty or twenty one, it's, it's, it's a relevant topic of conversation. That, that's all I think is so. You know, maybe are, are there gaps that we, nobody planned for this? And is, is there some cases where, hey, if we, we could do X within a technology perspective? Um, it would really have positive impact. So I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to get into the gory details. There's just some that you know, there, there are some places that it might help.
I, I can say, Tim, that we are looking at all avenues, absolutely looking at all avenues and how we can try to uh, save. Um, and we've been working with uh, Owen. Uh, we've been, you know, working with all department heads to see how we can save and and change the way we're doing business today because that's what it, it is. It's changing the way we do business today. What we haven't talked about is that we are definitely losing revenue uh, this year and that we have to be um that we're actually worried about moving forward because, you know, like utilities and stuff. So, some of that was being paid out of our revolving accounts. Um, but we're going to be losing revenue uh, with rentals uh, for March, April, May, and June. Uh, and we could lose some rentals over the summer because of it also. So we're seeing, uh, we're, we're projecting that those uh, revenue sources are going to be down. We know they're going to be down. Um, we're looking at, you know, our cafeteria revolving account. Those accounts are going to be down also because um, we are continuing to feed uh, you know, our students uh, at this time, but we're not going to get reimbursed for everything that we are doing. Uh, we still have to pay staff uh, and, and um, and we're, we're feeding more feelings than we usually do under the free and reduced requirements. Uh, so we're worried about that account. Um, athletics, we're losing money in athletics. We lost the spring fee in athletics because we're, we're going to um apply those uh, credits towards the kids next year for their um for their fees for next year. So we're just going to credit those back to them for next year. Uh, and so we have a lot of revenue sources that we're losing and we're trying to manage those as we're trying to manage the operational account. So we're trying to see what the best way of doing it, it is at, at this point. Um, you know, I, I've been giving reports to Jeff on, on a weekly basis. Um, but you know, expenses are still there, uh, but the revenue source has decreased.
Variety, do we have, uh, we actually have a couple of questions. Um, unless somebody on the committee would like to have anything else to add? No. Um, so Bonnie Ren Burgess asks, um, is there any way to announce how many people attended this um, school committee Zoom meeting tonight? Due to the different Zoom setup, there is no gallery view for attendees. Thanks, Bonnie Ren Burgess. So at one point, Bonnie, there were fifty attendees. Right now there are twenty two and there are
Six at the highest.
Sorry?
Sixty six at the highest is what I had.
Oh, fantastic. Wow. Incredible. Thank you. And um, next question is, uh, may have, this is from Chris McPupot's, may have missed this. What are prospective um, financial cuts to athletics and technology line items? Are assistant A D and trainer still planned? Also, are there any creative ways to reduce tuition related costs in any of the various line items? Jeff or Michael?
Um, so I could look at the, the cuts that we had for athletics. Looks like six hundred dollars for athletic supplies. And again, a lot of the athletic budget comes out of um, the fees that we charge. So that's, that's part of what Michael just talked about, losing all that, that revenue there. So athletics has a fairly small budget and the operating budget compared to everything else. Um, let me see, prospect, uh, technology line items. Computer replacement was reduced by a hundred thousand. Uh, technology P D was reduced by a thousand. I think those were the two, two.
And curriculum other expenses, technology also, Jeff.
Right. And that was, do you have that, Michael?
Four hundred, four hundred.
Four hundred, okay.
So and also remember that uh, the assistant A D and trainer are paid for outside or essentially paid for in um athletic fees and those. And so that is revolving account expense that does not get uh, for the most part uh, taken from our, from the budget request we make to the town.
I would say that, that they answer that as yes, they are still planned. Um, also are there creative ways to reduce tuition related costs in any other various line items? I'm not clear what that means.
Yeah, our tuition is our tuition. I mean, I think that if we make, when we have a special ed tuition, that's tuition, that's something that's set by the schools and set by you know, the child's need and that we should always pay what the need is that's assessed.
Maybe it's around developing programs of special ed. I mean, I know Mary's doing a great job with uh, reducing um and starting to begin programs. She's doing a transition program for next year that is still in the budget. Um, we think that's an important thing to, to keep in there for our students, uh, instead of sending them out of district. We want to keep them here to do their transition program. So I think that's what it's related to. And yes, we we're, that's what we're doing for that particular program.
Yeah. Um, and otherwise things like, uh, you know, uh, Norfolk Agricultural or Tri County, we really have no control over those tuition costs. We
Yeah, those are assessments to us.
Yeah. So other than that, I can't think of other tuition based programs that we pay into, do we?
Unless, uh, you know, special ed tuitions.
It's, it's the non-public school line item I was looking at. She just put it up there. Michael, do you have that in front of you?
Does it again?
The non-public school line item?
Mary. That's part of the special education tuitions. Um, so the non-public schools are the um non-collaboratives um, that we are sending students to. So they're not the private schools, but we belong to the accept collaborative as well as the um uh, tech collaborative. But if we're sending students to other collaborative programs such as lab, BICO, um, you know, many other collaborative programs, those would come under that tuition.
Okay. And we have another comment, our question from Bonnie Ren Burgess. What was the basis for the one million dollar cut before COVID nineteen? What has school committee response been to that cut and to oppose such an outsized hit for the schools? Thanks, Bonnie Ren Burgess.
Do you uh, want to speak to that one, Jeff, or do you want me to kind of take the second part?
I mean, well, I could take the first part. I think that's, you know, based on what the projections for revenue and expenses were from the town side. Um, they looked at a percentage uh, reduction based on the percentage of school versus town and the entire budget. And that's how they came up with that, that one million dollar. So that's, that's what I have been, that's how I understand it. Um, I don't know if you want to take the second part, Jess, but that's my understanding. Maybe you, you go to every warrant committee meeting, Jess, so you might know more than me on that.
Everyone. Some days I have to, you know, sleep. Um, I have been very vocal about uh, my extreme concerns about uh, the size of this cut and um, at this point, my feeling is, is that the warrant committee and the town feel as though the town is in such a significant um uh, revenue crisis in part because we no longer have access to a significant amount of free cash that uh, both because of policy and because of just diminishing funds from um our uh, our town's debt um, and kind of a, a fund that uh has from the M S B A from several, multiple years ago, that has been kind of funding a free cash. Um, pot and that we are no longer really using free cash. We've also delayed a number of expenses. And I say we as a town because I think that we have to think about town and school together. And I think that we spend too much time thinking about it as two separate places. Um, but that there is a real significant uh loss. Um, and well, there's a really significant uh need to catch up to expenses that we have been deferring as a town for a very long time. Uh, and that essentially even now, um, what might have been a more negotiable number perhaps around the one million dollar cut is now feeling more and more like we have no good answers and we have to be extremely conservative. And again, I'm using the word "we" as a town. I think that as a school committee, we're going to have to think very strongly and very hard about what we can, what we can tolerate. But, you know, Bonnie, I wish I had a good answer for you. I don't. I really don't have that great answer that would make any of that any better. I think that the town itself is also very uncertain as to what their revenue will be and how they focused, or how they figured it out. So we will continue to plug forward. All right, and I hope that that doesn't answer anybody's question, but it does give you kind of a sense of where the town is now.
Just in perspective, too, to remember that, as I mentioned before, the town doesn't get a lot of money from the state, but it gets enough. And in terms of, you know, what we, both six or seven million as a school district and other millions to the town. So that just lends itself to the understanding that much of what the school budget and the town budget comes from all of you. It comes from your tax money, from your real estate taxes. So we are not a slave to the state as so many other communities are. Unfortunately, that is on your backs. So I think, I don't want to get into a, I mentioned this the last meeting, too. I don't want to get into a situation where we're talking a lot about the state causing us a hardship because it's really local revenue that, that keeps us going as a community and as a school district, so.
And that that revenue is built almost entirely on residential tax rates. And so, you know, short, short of the fantasy target that doesn't take up much room and doesn't bring any traffic and doesn't require us to change our zoning, we are going to continue to have these problems until we figure out a different way of raising revenue as a town. So that's my financial lecture for the night.
All right, any other comment?
Anime, I was thinking that in the next couple of weeks or so, that the budget subcommittee should get together. Maybe if we start to get more guidance from the state and/or feedback from the town on what they're thinking. We just don't know when that's going to be. So I would say next couple of weeks. It could be in a month. I don't know. But just think about getting Megan and Jess together and having that subcommittee meeting once we get some more information.
We've been trying to keep apprised of what's going on with the budget, but, you know, at this point, it hasn't been helpful to really have a subcommittee meeting for a while because we simply don't know what the numbers are for real.
Okay, great. Informational items.
Sorry, I was muted. Sorry about that. Let me start again. Thank you, Madam Chair. So there's a couple of informational items in your materials. One that I wanted to share, if you remember at the last meeting, you folks generously allowed me to donate some personal protective equipment to Tufts Medical Center. That was masks and goggles. So the CEO, Michael Atkins, sent us a really nice thank you letter. You know, just, it's quick. I'll read it to you. "Like to thank you for your generous donation of personal protective equipment to Tufts Medical Center. We are so grateful for your support in helping us confront the coronavirus pandemic. We appreciate your great awareness of having a reliable supplier of personal protective equipment during this challenging time. At Tufts Medical Center, we have a single objective in responding to the crisis, to save as many lives as possible. Your donation will help us achieve our objective by ensuring that our extraordinary workforce has the equipment they need to safely provide compassionate care to all of those come through our doors. Thanks again for your generosity, and we hope your community will overcome this pandemic." So thank you. I appreciate you guys approving that, and they were very thankful. I got an email from a Medfield resident saying that they, last Saturday, or two Saturdays ago, I guess, or last Saturday, the entire COVID-19 unit was using our materials. So they were very thankful about that. So thank you for approving that. The other one is a letter from Powers and Sullivan, our auditors. Just going over what they found, I just want to congratulate Michael again for a wonderful end of the year financial report for the fiscal year ending 2019. The letter is included, and there were no findings in the audit for the end of the year. So again, Michael does a phenomenal job of this, takes great care in doing this. And again, the auditors agree that he's done a wonderful job. So congratulations, Michael, and thank you for that work.
Thank you, Michael.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. We've got, for our future agenda items, we've got the Continued Budget Talk, Continued New Dale Street Project, Challenge Success kindergarten space discussions, student feedback. And our next meeting is on the 7th.
Hey, Anime.
Yes.
Would it be possible to add SEL for future agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And maybe combine them, you know, however, it's a broader group view.
Great, thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
So before we adjourn, are there any closing statements or comments? Jess?
I got nothing. Man, I'm sitting here in my house, teaching my kids, doing school committee work, and trying to start a new hobby. Everybody else do anything different than that?
Super. How about Leo?
I think I've spoken enough this week. I think this is my third Zoom with Jeff this week alone, and some of you. But there is one comment, I guess I would like to read that sums up Dylan Oliveto, who's actually Tara, by the way. Just want to say, "I am thankful for all the hard work that teachers have done for remote learning." And I guess I can echo that. This has been trying time for everybody. And I said this on the call with Holly's teacher, and I will say that we are very fortunate to live in Medfield and have the community like we do. So I consider myself lucky to live here and be a part of this community because of that. So, and thank you all on this call who are a part of that solution, so.
Beautiful. Megan?
Yeah, I want to reiterate that, and that since we have all the principals on this webinar tonight, just thank you really sincerely for all that you have done and just how quickly you were able to mobilize this 180 turn that is our life right now. But I also wanted to just encourage the parents who, and I'm one as well, that are kind of uneasy with all of this, to reach out and ask questions. I mean, there isn't a right or wrong way to do this, and I know somebody had already said that in this meeting, and that the teachers are not just teachers, but they're also human beings that are living through this pandemic as well. And that everybody is here kind of to lean on each other at this point. And I appreciate the emails that we've been sent. Aw, Mary's baby. More than just, you know, a teacher. He's a mommy. Lost my train of thought there, sorry. But anyway, keep the input coming. Please share with the teachers your concerns about your students or your ideas. And I'm sure everyone's going to be open to it and take part in any of the surveys or thought exchanges that are coming. And just keep the conversation going and know that no one is going to fall behind, so to speak, because there is no longer a behind. We're all in this together. So we're all going to start the school year at the same, at the same place that we should be. There just is a different "should" now, so.
And I also want to thank Christine and Mary, who have been putting in astounding hours and don't necessarily have the same kind of outward-facing role that the principals do. But I do know how much time you guys are spending trying to just steer this cruise ship and make sure it doesn't hit the hotel next to the dock.
Except personal experience, Jess.
Super. Tim, thank you.
I just want to echo the thank you as well, right? The feedback, we're getting some feedback and sharing feedback. I think that's another way of saying we need you. You know, how important everyone is, so that's one. And I just think, you know, I mean, change, right? We all need some change. This living at home and what we're doing, that's variety. It's a good thing. And, you know, I think that's, we're at that point. We have to listen. We're doing a good job. In order to listen, we definitely need feedback from the parents and whatnot. We learn and we adapt. And, you know, we're all, we're all doing that. We think we're doing a good job of changes.
And if I'm behind on a couple of emails, I really apologize. I will get to you. I think I should say that out loud to the people out there. Been a big week for emails.
Great. I was, so Owen said we had our highest number, 66 people attend, which is phenomenal. So thank you to all those folks who stayed on and participated and just witnessed. So thank you, and thank you, principals. What I wanted to just mention, you know, I mentioned it a bit during the school closure, the students, how everybody's on edge right now, I think, you know, parents, students, et cetera. And what I have so appreciated is, if you live in Precinct 1 or 2, Denise Garlick has been sending out these emails and daily emails. And as a constant, she's always had this resource at the bottom of her email, which I find so helpful. And I think tonight, I just wanted to remind folks of the wonderful gift we have in town for Interface, that referral service that we have. And so I encourage people to go onto our school website to get that, you know, if you need help. May is Mental Health Awareness Month coming up. But I think, you know, data showing that just things are happening, and we have to take care of ourselves, and it's okay to ask for help, essentially. And if you do not get Denise Garlick's email, reach out to me. I will forward one to you. But she's got things, you know, where called to talk, where you can text to 211 and just reach out to someone. And so, yeah, so let's take care of ourselves and look out for the people in our homes and each other. So thank you. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A second.
Tim Knight, second. Wonderful. I'll take a roll call. And Jess Riley?
Hi.
Leo Brem?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
And Anime O'Shea Brook. No, I missed Tim. Tim Knight, sorry. And Anime. Yes, all right. Good night. Nice to see you.
Thank you.